On C-3, D.J. Mazarello, Mayor, requests that the attached loan order for $3 million be adopted for the police station planning and owner project manager costs. As I indicated, this is on for hearing tonight. I'll first hear from members of the public. Are there any members of the public which to speak in favor of C-03? And once again, any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of C-3? And for final time, any member of the public which to speak in favor of C-3? Does any member of the public wish to speak in opposition to C-3? Second time, any member of the public wish to speak in opposition to C-3? And the third and final time, any member of the public wish to speak in opposition to C-3? Does any member of the council have anything that they want to add with respect to C-3? Yes, Councilor Frito?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned the last time when we spoke about this, I'm in support. This is a great step forward for the police station, and you and I both know what a good project manager we will have as we dealt with him in the high school. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you for your comments. Has any other member of the council, before we close the public hearing, wished to make any comments? Should I read the loan order before I close the public hearing? City of Leominster and City Council ordered that $3 million is appropriated for the purpose of financing, planning, and owner project manager costs relating to the construction of a new police station, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount, issue bonds or notes, therefore, under General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor and the treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And anything else that anybody wants to add on the council? Then I will declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone, state their formal name, their address, and along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep the comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first scheduled speaker is John DeChico.
I'm John DeChico, 193 North Main Street in Leominster. I'm here to speak to C-11 and C-12 and C-13 this evening on your agenda, but if the council president will indulge me for just one minute, I would like to give an update about the status of an issue that was brought up in the public forum dealing with the rail trail the last time I was present at the council, as I feel it's important.
It's fine, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to come back specifically this evening to say thank you to the council for, first of all, giving the opportunity to all the taxpayers and citizens of the city a few weeks ago to discuss this very important project and its impacts on the residents and the livelihoods of our city. I also wanted to come back and state that this issue that I had or my family had with our properties as abutters to the project has been resolved favorably, and I wanted to thank the principal people who made that happen, from the City of Leominster, Nikki Peters, Economic Development Coordinator, and also from Brown, Richardson, and Rowe, Clarissa Rowe, who's present tonight, the architectural design and landscapers. Those two women brought together a team of about 13 people from Mast dot, from Stan Tech, the engineers on the project, from their own firms, and from the City of Leominster to physically come on the site and review the issues that I brought forward that evening. And as I said, it has been resolved in a very, very effective way, with little impact on the project, I believe, but a very positive impact for the neighbors in our area. So I wanted to start off again saying that was a positive outcome. I know you folks hear a lot of negatives, and there were a lot of negatives certainly that evening, but I wanted to state publicly that this issue, and I realize it's a lot simpler issue frankly to resolve than some of the issues of people who have encroachments and eminent domain takings, but nonetheless, these folks put the effort out and they stood to their word that they gave you that evening that they would address this, and they've done due diligence. As far as the support, I am supporting two items before you tonight, and I'm asking you to support them. I feel that although I know there's still a lot of outstanding issues, and there are people affected, business owners, as well as abutters to this project, that are going to have some adverse impacts, overall, this project is well on its way, and I think it can be successful, and I think it's a positive move for the City of Leominster and our twin city, Pittsburgh. And I want to say that we all know that financially, the city has made a huge commitment already on this body, as a fiduciary agent for the taxpayers, representing the taxpayers in the city, have already made large commitments to this project. I believe at least $300,000 was voted on by this body. That's taxpayer money here in City of Leominster that has gone into the project already. Of course, there'll be additional funds requested tonight, but then, of course, there's the money that some people think is free money, but it's really not, the grants, the federal money, the state money that's funding this project. We also learned, some people for the first time, that if we were to back out on this project, the City of Leominster, i.e. the taxpayers, would be on the hook to pay this money back. So I really think that we have gone past the point financially and responsibly to our citizens here in the city to back out on this project at this point in time. I really feel that it's way past that point, and I don't think it's advisable, and I don't think it's feasible financially for us to be taking those kinds of steps backwards. I'm also concerned that if we do that, that it sends the wrong message to our federal and state partners for future possibilities of this city receiving grant monies for any project, because I know that if somebody said to me, here's the money, go ahead with the project, and in the 11th hour I say, no, I don't want to take it, they're going to say, look, there's 350 cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts that could have used this money, and you've basically led us down this path for years now on this project. To back out at this point, I think would be a big mistake. So I hope that the council will see the wisdom and the importance of furthering this project along, completing it, and seeing it to its completion. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next scheduled speaker, Joyce Ledger. Did you want to speak, ma'am?
I will, sure.
Okay. Again, I'm going to ask the audience if you can try to keep your comments to within a two-minute timeframe. Let everyone have a chance to speak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Ledger, 11 Amy Ave., Leominster. And I didn't realize when I signed in it was to speak, but that's okay. I'm one of the Leominster residents on the Twin City Rail Trail Association Steering Committee, and I wrote to most of you on the committee here in favor, of course. Just two quick things. One is my opinion is while I feel for people who are abutters and have encroachments, I feel it was never their land to begin with, so while they may have benefited in some way, it's not their land. It's a good thing they benefited, but at the end of the day, I feel that for the overall community, a rail trail provides wonderful benefits. I included in that letter to you some factual data from, it is the RailStrails.org. It's a nationwide organization, there's a lot of data there, and it talks a lot about some of the improvements that businesses in the community can reap from having a rail trail, and there's a lot of factual data there. So while we all have different opinions, I'd like to point you to that. And I think that's it. I just think I'm a bicycle lover myself, I think it will attract tourism, and it will improve businesses. Again, it's in the data, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bernadette, is it Colley or Coley? I'm sorry.
I too did not realize that when I signed in I was signing up to speak, but I am 100% in favor of the rail trail for its health benefits to citizens to get out and enjoy fresh air and get moving. This whole country needs to get moving more, so.
Okay, Bernadette, thank you. We have the address on that. Okay. The next one, is it Marla? Marlin?
Marlin, yes.
Come on up, Marlin.
I'm mistaken.
Okay, that's fine. You guys are checking in, I got you. Okay, Larry Casassa?
I would be the fourth person to answer. And I will defer to the good residents of Leominster.
Okay, thank you, Larry. And Kathleen Coakley?
I didn't know I was stuck. But I do, I just want to.
Kathleen, if you could come to the microphone, please, if you'd like to speak. We'd love to hear what you have to say. Just, again, for the record, name and address, please.
Kathleen Coakley, C-O-A-K-L-E-Y, 224 Priest. And I didn't know I was, I just signed in the paper. I didn't get an agenda on that. My neighbor just told me the meeting was going on, but I don't know really what's going on, like with my property being right next to my driveway. I haven't heard one way or another if it's going to be changed or what. So I'm still concerned about being so close to my yard, to the house, actually, too. So I'm.
You do remember the conversation I had with Mickey Peters?
Yeah, but I didn't hear back.
That was it? That's the plan?
Oh, it is?
You're all set.
Oh, okay, that's what I knew.
Okay, you're all set.
I wasn't sure that's.
They made an engineering change.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else in the audience like to come to the microphone and address the council?
Hi, Linda Jean Hall, 435 North Street, Leominster. I just wanted to say that I am totally in favor of the rail trail. I think it's an excellent opportunity for people to get out and exercise and have a safe place to do it. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, the microphone is open.
Hi, John Icaboni, 54 Green Street, 412. I live in Leominster, but part-time in Acton, and I've seen what Acton has done with their rail trails, and it's an amazing system that has a lot of activity, so it's a great addition.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Jane Kelfis, Main, 770 Main Street. I'm also in favor of the rail trail. I think that I've been on other rail trails, have spent money on other rail trails, so I know that any, especially the location of ours, where it does pass by so many businesses. And I think, again, for health reasons, walking around Leominster, I live on Main Street, the traffic is horrible, so I have to inhale the fumes, and it's very hilly, and I'm getting old, and so I think it will benefit so many people by having the rail trail in Leominster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, would anyone else like to address the council?
Hi there, Andrea Freeman, 431 Pleasant Street in Leominster. I am also on the Steering Committee for the Twin Cities Rail Trail Association, and I just want to, again, express my support. I think I emailed almost all of you and left voicemails for all of you to encourage you for the support, and I want to also, you know, for the abutters, I mean, I wish I were an abutter, and yet I feel for the folks, and there's a couple of them in the audience here tonight that are still in the process of resolving, you know, the exact specifics of it, and I want to, you know, applaud Nikki Peters for all the work that she has done with folks, back and forth to get things right, and just from talking to a couple of folks this evening, I understand there might be a couple more people, and so as much, I am totally in favor of this, I encourage your vote on, what is it, C-12, C-13, and C-4, and, you know, I really, I want everybody to be as excited about this as so many of us are, so thank you.
Thank you. Again, would anyone like to address the council?
Just have some papers for you guys.
Name and address, please, for the record.
There you are. Thank you. My name is Mary Jean, 40 Royal Oaks Way in Leominster. If you could just pass those out so we could just follow along, thank you. I apologize, I couldn't figure out to get someone's attention to pass them on. So I guess while we're passing them on, I'll start talking. First of all, there's nothing wrong with riding a bike or having a trail, I just want everybody to know that that's okay, and I think it's great, too, and I love your stickers, and I like the organization, and I've met a lot of nice people doing this, I have to tell you. It's not about anything like that, it's about the truth and the reality of what it's doing to our city. So are we all passed out? So I'm going to go really quick. So you have a handout in your hand, and I want to show you that, on November 28th, an emergency preamble from Dean Mazarello came down, and at that point, the city council signed over complete control to the mayor. He included a letter that said the closing for this project was going to be on December 16th, and that's on page two, so I guess I'll identify the page to follow along. So now we're on page three, and this is the purchase and sales agreement that we finally obtained. Thank you, Caitlin, you've been a sweetheart, and I appreciate all the help we've gotten from the City of Leominster. This agreement was signed on June 14th, 2017. As you can notice, the preamble says for an emergency situation to close on December. That didn't happen. If you look at the next page on Section I, and I won't read the whole thing, but it will say that CSX, excuse me, that first Twin City Encroachments list was produced 9/8/2016. That means on 9/8/2016, anybody that sat here and gave a presentation was well aware there were 134 encroachments in Leominster, and 86 properties in Pittsburgh, and I don't have an exact note, they just gave me the property addresses. So when you read that paragraph as well, it also says that CSX is responsible for paying for the encroachments. So low and behold, when we started hearing after watching the public forums that CSX was going to be paying for the encroachments, and that didn't happen, you can imagine why everybody who was in a butter was really concerned, and things started changing really quickly. So even I didn't understand it, but finally I got a clarification from the state. What happened was, the purchase and sales was signed without that piece being involved in the original piece, so therefore, CSX was not responsible any longer for the encroachments or paying for them. Now, if you continue and you close, you'll see you have a couple of letters. The first letter was sent July 28th, 2017, and this was sent out to both Phase 1 and Phase 2. In that letter, it also says that CSX is the abutter, excuse me, is the owner, but in fact, the city had already purchased the land on June 14th. So he sent the letter to everybody in the City of Leominster on July 28th, telling them CSX still owned the land, and state and federal regulations made you clear now your own encroachment. That's hundreds of thousands of dollars. Has anybody realized that yet? Really looked at these encroachments? So I included three letters. So the next letter is dated April 30th, and that's the original easement letter that we all received, which now, for the first time, says to the people who have easements, guess what, we're taking an easement. They asked them to give a donation, and from what I was told, only one person signed up and didn't sign up correctly, so that's why we have the easements before us. The next letter was May 28th, and that was the encroachment letter. So if you look at this, these letters came out April 30th, 2019, May 28th, 2019. So we really haven't had a lot of chance to deal with this, people. It's been really quick that the understanding of what's going on is going on. Okay, so if you read that one, it says, "The city may have no choice but to instruct the city solicitor to commence litigation against you in order to remove the encroachments and seek damages and harm suffered as a result of this trespass." That's a threat to the property owners who only had, like, no time to understand this. There has never been a clear understanding about these encroachments. Everything that has been said has not been accurate, and I even included for you, because I don't want you to have to believe me, but if you look at the project background, it says a stipulation of purchase for CXS is responsible for resolving the encroachments. How did the contract get changed between the purchase and sales, and then all of a sudden, when the one was sold, that didn't include that being paid for? This body signed over complete control of this program to the mayor without understanding that the contract was being changed. I really, we need to have an understanding here on this. So then, to just move on really quickly, and I know I only have two minutes, and I know I've gone past that, I gave you a soft traffic understanding. We went through the traffic, and if you look at the sites, there is not one place on this bike trail where you drive more than a half mile before coming to a crossing. When you go through four lights, Carter Park, Priest Street has no light, Water Street, Hamilton, and Doubletree Way, you've only gone one mile, .3, you're off your bike probably every six tenths of a mile. That's not really a rail trail. That's not what, I've been on a rail trail in Acton and Holden and all those places. Yeah, you go for a long time, you don't have to get off, and each one of these intersections, people, we have to go down and press the crossing button. Has anybody looked at North Main Street, what that's going to do? Has anybody been there at 3:00, when the buses are coming, bringing kids home, and bikes are coming out? So we're going to leave that, too. The next one is known problems with rail trails, and I just wanted you to have it to see that they're not all beautiful and sunshiny, but they can be, I get that. And then the last one is, oh, I have two more. We're building on a super site fund. Does any of us remember that? I haven't heard anything about that yet, and I talked to the EPA, and they said we need to know about the lands restricting capped and uncapped land. That was in the contract that you all received, that Caitlin sent to you. There is capped and uncapped land where we are building. Do we have a protective human environment here? The EPA is now looking into this for us. There hasn't been any acknowledgement about going into that uncapped land and that capped land, so we really need to look at that. And then lastly, I just left you a list that I found online of crimes that have been committed on rail trails, and I kept listening to Clarissa when I'm saying, it can't be all sunshine, but there's quite a few lists there. Listen, we're only here to see the truth. I understand we have spent some money, but we can stop. We can stop right now. The federal dollars are good for 10 years, we all know that. Transportation funds are not used regularly, they are returned to the state on a regular basis, this is not unusual. The state actually has more money invested in this than we do. I am sure we will have no problem getting the funds back again, but I'm asking you, please, tonight, look at this stuff. This really is a lot of stuff, and this vote is about Leominster, not the rail trail in Holden. This vote is about the abutters, not the rail trail in Arlington. This vote is about taxpayers, not the rail trail in Air. I'm asking you, please, take a step back for everyone in this city. I'm not doing this because I have nothing else to do, believe me, I'd rather stay home and grow my garden, but there's some serious, serious things going on here, and traffic needs to be looked at, the capped land needs to be looked at, and certainly how this city just cost its abutters hundreds of thousands of dollars with nobody knowing really needs to be looked at, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council?
Hi, my name's Angela Chabaski, I live at 42 Willow Street, and I just wanted to say, I grew up on a rail trail. I have two little boys who learned how to ride their bikes on rail trails. They both are, go to the schools here, they live here, and as a mother, I want somewhere safe for my kids to ride their bikes a lot. We live on a side street, and cars go fast on our road, it's scary when you have kids coming around corners. Our kids deserve somewhere to ride to the park. Our kids really deserve this.
Thank you, Angela. Again, the microphone is open.
My name is Peter Latchis, 22 Demasa Drive. The first thing I'd like to say, I watched the 13th June meeting about the city council's discussion on the rail trail. Dean Mazarello portrayed it as a win-win situation. You're going to have state money, federal money, and city money, the greatest thing ever. So then we went into this, they went into discussion. Wayne Nichols asked, I know there's always some problem with easements and encroachments, how many and what are they, what is it going to cost? The answer back was, maybe there's a couple, when they fully knew there was over 100 of them. Another question was asked, well, Ward 1 was asking about the train station, and the state answered, the Ward 1 counselor, and she answered back, you didn't answer my questions. You were avoiding a lot of questions. Not ever were you told you were going to clear 82.5 feet, never. So I don't think, I think the council was kept in the dark, I think there was a lot of things they could have. Naturally, you're going to listen to the experts, you asked, you know, sensible questions, but they didn't answer back. It was a win-win situation, they were told that you were only paying, at the time, 2%. The city's only paying 2%, and we're all paying the rest. So it was sold as a fantastic package with low money. Now, tonight, you're voting on $83,100, but truly, you're voting on $151,000. I don't know if you know that, because $68,000 is going to be pulled from Chapter 90 for the roads and put on the rail trail. So when you vote tonight, or the 26th, you've got to remember, this price has increased again. And also, I don't think it's fair, it's kind of crazy to me that you have a Phase 1 and 2, and Ward 4 council asked a very important question last time, how much are we going to be in for? And that is a very good question, because you're paying bits by bits, and you're getting sucked down a rabbit hole. And if you vote for this, and you vote for a total of 151, and then the 340 you're already into, you start getting into more money. Then they're talking about Phase 2, then you're going to be talking more money, then you're hooked, so you keep going and going and going, and it's sold for a low price, and it's a huge benefit. Now, the question no one has answered yet is that they're planning to use, they say, state money for the second phase. What I don't like about the second phase is they feel it won't be as tough as the federal phase, so what you're doing is, these people up here in Phase 1 are getting hurt seriously bad, and the other people, you're hoping that there'll be less restrictions, and you can make kind of deals with them, so it'll be effective, you know, less effective in that way, but it's not. But it's not answered. If you go by state money or fund, it also brought, it was brought up to me that they have two options, second phase, they can use state funding or local funding. So if it's local funding, are we gonna be on the hook again for more money? And that would be $800,000 to buy the rest of the piece. Is the city gonna be on the hook? These questions aren't answered yet. And like I said, Carter Park, you know, you talk about the companies and people buying, using the land. Well, that land was reported 24 years ago, rat-infested land, and they wanted somebody to clean it up. I know it's been cleaned up before. I don't know by the federal government, maybe the city went in and cleaned it because they had such a bad problem in North Lemonster. But the point is, Carter Park has got five encroachments in the park itself. So the city encroached, the landowners in it encroached, the businesses encroached. This was abandoned land. It wasn't kept up. It was, it wasn't nice. The people were looking at it. They might have put some seed down and mowed the lawn. They did that in the city. Carter Park was mowed for years. And that parking, that 15 parking spots there, that's gonna have, the concrete's gonna have to be taken up if we're using federal money and grassed in. It's not allowed. So, and other encroachments are there. But the deal is, to use state money, local money, they get off the hook and the other people don't. So I think that's totally unfair, and I just wanna clear it up. I'm very, I do a lot of gym work. I work out a lot. I like health. I like the idea of a bike path. But I am totally against a bike path with bikes riding around on Route 12, going back and forth. I would like a study on that, that I haven't heard of, that, or like the police recommend it, and how they feel about bikes on near Route 2 and crossing, you know, 11 dangerous roads, streets, with 26,000 cars coming down on Route 12. I think it's a serious matter you gotta think about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. We're gonna begin the city council meeting by law. We're actually a little late. The Lemonster City Council meeting for August 12, 2019 is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice of all.
We'll now begin with the road call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Council Ottinger.
Present.
Council Bonanza.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Shalafel Zephyr.
Present.
Council Dombrowski.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
All nine members are here. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of our last meeting of the city council of July 22nd, 2019. I've just received them this evening, and they are quite, it's 10 pages, I believe, 12 pages. So I haven't had a chance to review them.
That's fine.
So I would like to defer to the next meeting on that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right.
Do they have a motion for recess?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. We'll now go back to the public forum, which is open to the audience again. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening, councilors. I'm Dennis Rosa from 40 Royal Oaks Way in Lemonster, Mass. I wanna start off tonight by saying, I too like rail trails, when they're out in the woods. And you're gonna find, most of them are out in the woods. They don't have 12 or 14 intersections that you have to cross. I know when I was at the State House, I voted for transportation bills. We put millions of dollars into rail trails all over Massachusetts with the help of the state and the federal government. But Lemonster's unique. When CSX and the railroads came in here, they came here because it was a manufacturing town. So all the manufacturers lined up on the railroad, and even the oil depots lined up on the railroad so they could get rail service. And it was very efficient and economically feasible. We employed thousands of people at the time in factories. As you know, we've closed a lot of them. And we're trying to rejuvenate our factories, and we're trying to bring business to Lemonster. When I was a city councilor, we had 19 TIFs, Tax Increment Financing Programs. We helped businesses grow. We brought in hundreds of more jobs. This is the first transportation package that I've seen in my 27 years of being an elected official, that is gonna take away jobs, especially from the city of Lemonster. That's gonna happen in Pittsburgh, too, but Lemonster has so many more businesses lined up near the rail trail. So we brought hundreds of jobs here now. Losing one job is too much. But in this case, my estimation, I've talked to a lot of the business owners, talked to a lot of people about this, people that are afraid to come down and talk, I understand. I haven't done this for a couple of years, I'm a little nervous. But they asked me to speak for them, and I think we're gonna lose minimum about 25 or 30 jobs the way we're going. Now, I see that we made some progress tonight, but we haven't made enough progress. So I am speaking in opposition of C4, C12, and C13. Besides losing the jobs, when you have easements, encroachments, and eminent domain, I call those the evil three E-words. This is very, very serious. There's nothing more serious when a public official has to take land by eminent domain, and also easements. Now, the encroachments, I know some of us business owners must have, we're evil, we went on the land and took their land. That isn't the way it happened. There's so much drugs on these trails right now, not the new trails, but on this existing rail trail proposal, that a lot of us, we tried to buy the land, we tried to lease the land, we would do anything, because we had to protect our land because of all the drug deals and vandalism. So in my case, American Autobody, I'm not being affected that bad as an individual business owner. I'm speaking for all the rest of the business owners that are really being negatively impacted economically. But in that case, we put the fence up to protect ourselves. Now, I've since taken it down, as the city directed me to, and now I'm gonna have problems. So if this does move forward, and eventually, I think it will, I hope you can put my six-foot fence back up there. It just cost me almost $2,000 to take down and dispose of it. And it needs a fence there anyway, because there's a 35-foot embankment. And these are a lot of the encroachments. They weren't done, because we're trying to grab somebody's land, the railroad abandoned the land. You can't believe how bad it was. American Autobody and Rep. Inc. spent thousands of dollars grooming the land around us. I put up signs all around, on telephone poles and everything, neighborhood crime watch signs. We coexisted with CSX. Why can't we coexist with the city of Lemonster? The first things we heard, everything we asked was, "No, the state won't let us do it. No, the federal government won't let us do it." All of a sudden, some of us really got involved and started asking for information under the Freedom of Information Act. And that's where you're probably getting most of your information, from two of us that keep requesting this information. You had very, very little information. Now you have a lot of information. So I know I'm running out of time, so what I'm asking you to do is table this for study, C4, C12, C13. See if you can keep working on this project to eliminate the negative economic impacts on businesses, and also homeowners. This has been terrible for homeowners. They got a little shed when they bought the house there. They didn't do it on purpose. The shed was there when they bought the house. They looked at a map, they're not experts, they don't know where their property lines were. They just told them, "There's your fence, there's your property." So I know it's easy to say, "Well, businesses were awful at doing these encroachments," but most of them were done out of necessity. And many of us, like myself, I'm willing to work with the city. If there's a way we can get an extension from the federal government, let's try it. Maybe we're gonna need a congressional act. They don't do anything, so that's not gonna happen. But thank you for the time, and you have a serious decision to make tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Former state representative and city councilor, thank you. Again, the microphone is open. If anyone would like to address the council. Second call. Third and final call.
Hello, my name is Caleb Weldon. I'm at 78 Jordans Way in Lemonster. So I just wanna speak in support of the rail trail. So some people mentioned that it's kind of in the middle, and I see that as an advantage, the middle of the city. That's kind of an advantage, because it's not just for recreation, it's also for transportation. I know people, especially younger people that don't have cars, that use it just as a way to get around the city, like, as it is now, as it is now, overgrown and difficult to get around. Like, I see a paved rail trail. When it's complete, you can get from the middle of Lemonster to the middle of Pittsburgh, and you can use that for recreation, for exercise. You can also use it just to get around, without having to drive or walk along the side of the street. You know, it's gonna be off, it'll be safer than it is now for people that do use it. It's gonna be safer than walking along sidewalk at some points. And I feel for the people that are gonna have disadvantage, you know, losing sheds, losing a bit of grass or fences. But I think for the city as a whole, it's gonna be a big advantage. Thank you.
Caleb, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thais Sobrino, 227 Priest Street, Lemonster. I expressed my concerns last meeting about safety and my privacy, because I'm on a busy street. Somebody approached me after the meeting, promised me to walk on my property with me, to make easy on me, and the only reason I have not signed the easement was because nobody came to my property and walked with me. And it came to my attention that they did, called my neighbors, and walked on the path again, and dealt, you know, made amendments with them, but I was not invited. So I'm still uneasy about this, because I feel that I won't have any privacy. I'm not, I do not have a problem with the land that is not mine, because I'm not taking that. So I still have concerns about privacy for the homeowners abouting the trail.
Just so you know, as your ward councilor, I've visited your house seven times. Three times in one day, you weren't home any of the times.
But they said they were gonna...
Just the pickup truck, that's it. Well, that would've been Nikki Peters from the planning office.
I believe she does have my contact information, and I never received a phone call or an email about.
Is it okay, then?
The microphone, Nikki. This isn't immediate, but I'm...
No, that's fine. So Nikki Peters, Economic Development. We didn't end up reaching out to her, only because when we did meet with the other two homeowners for the sidewalk, the decision was to actually continue the fence all the way to the road. So she did actually receive the end result that she was hoping for.
Okay. Does the resident have the... Ma'am, could you come back to the microphone? Do you have that information, ma'am?
No.
So I apologize, it should've been emailed.
Okay.
We didn't email everybody afterwards.
Okay, if we can, if we can take care of that immediately.
All right.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come to the microphone? Second time. Third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Council's now back in session. We're gonna begin with communications from the mayor. We have one item with the suspension of rules. Madam Clerk, before you do, we're gonna vote on the suspension of rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, the rules have been suspended. Madam Clerk.
C9. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, authorized the city of Lemonster to pursue $25,190 through the United States Department of Justice Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Communication 9 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a letter from the mayor, let's see, dated July 29th. Dear members of the city council, I'm writing to ask for your support of a petition to allow the city of Lemonster to pursue our yearly allocation to the Department of Justice for Justice Assistance Grants Funds. This year's allocation is $25,190. The Lemonster Police Department intends to utilize this funding to support continued community policing efforts and equipment purchases. The grant requires notification and subsequent vote of the governing body, in this case, the Lemonster City Council, before the grant can be submitted. This is an excellent opportunity for the cities to assess, access Department of Justice funding. I hope you will support moving forward with this application. Another letter, where he has attached the emergency preamble, he respectfully requests that the city council authorize city of Lemonster to pursue $25,190 through the United States Department of Justice, JAG program. I'm requesting an emergency preamble on this item due to the fact that we were made aware of this grant on July 25th, and it is due August 23rd, leaving only one council meeting for the required approval. So this is something that we have done in the past. I believe last year it was the same thing. It was late. I actually did have a very short conversation with the clerk before the meeting, so I might want her to weigh in as well on her knowledge of what happened here.
Is there any concern at all on that?
No.
It sounds like you did a fine job.
Okay. All right, so what I would do is, I would recommend that we grant this emergency preamble, and I would ask you to pull my committee.
We'll pull the committee. Beginning with Council Frida, the clerk.
Yeah, I agree. We've done this a number of times, and it's always been in our benefit.
Thank you. Third member, Council Dombrowski.
I agree.
Thank you. Madam Chair, please requalify.
We have a unanimous recommendation to grant the emergency preamble to authorize the city of Lemonster to pursue $25,190 through the Department, the United States Department of Justice Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant. Communication 9. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of 9 to 0, communication 9 has been granted. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll now move on to communications. Begin with Communication 10.
C10. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the Cross Connection Control Ordinance, Chapter 17, Section 17-18, be updated per the attached document. The adoption of this updated ordinance will help with the safety preservation of the water quality within the city of Lemonster water distribution system, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I refer this to the chairperson of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Department of Public Works and the Health Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 10 has been given regular course with referral to the DPW and the Health Department. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 11.
C11. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the list of election officers for 2019 to 2020 be appointed.
Communication 11 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course on Communication 11. We'll now move on to Communication 12.
C12. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to consider acquiring by eminent domain permanent and temporary easements on certain properties located adjacent or near the city-owned Twin Cities Rail Trail in connection with the Twin Cities Rail Trail construction project. The properties affected by the taking are identified more particularly in Schedule A of the Order of Taking, by which the city will acquire the easements enclosed herewith and shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land Twin Cities Rail Trail Lemonster and Pittsburgh, Mass., Prepared for City of Lemonster, dated August 12th, 2019, Prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants."
Communication 12 is referred to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the mayor's office, Conservation Commission, and the Environmental Director. We also need to vote on a public hearing for August 26, 2019, at 6:05 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor, Council Frida.
Mr. President, just out of a courtesy to the public, either you or the Legal Affairs Chair, just explain what this is, so that the people here know that, what we're doing with this, and what they're here for tonight.
Okay. We won't get sidetracked from the recommendation. It is regular course, but out of professional courtesy, that's a good idea. So I'll yield the floor back to the chairman of Legal Affairs, if you can give us a snapshot on this, either now or into our old business later on tonight.
I mean, essentially, the city is intending to acquire eminent domain, permanent and and temporary easements on various properties to effectuate the rail trail project. And those properties are shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land Twin Cities Rail Trail Leominster and Fitchburg, Mass., Prepared for the City of Leominster." And I think that we all have a copy of that. I think the public can get a copy of that at the clerk's office if they desire.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. So communication twelve, the recommendation is regular course with referral to the mayor, the Conservation Commission, the Environmental Agent, and also to establish a public hearing for the 26th of August at 6:05 in the council chambers. All those in favor of setting the hearing date and time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, this has been established. Thank you. We now move on to communication thirteen.
C13, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to adopt an order of taking, taking by eminent domain, permanent and temporary easements in-
Hold on for one second, please, I apologize.
Of course.
I'm going to go back to communication twelve, there might be a little bit of a glitch. I'm going to yield the floor to Council Schelfer Zephyr. Before we vote, we're going to take a new vote on it.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any, I have a, an immediate member of my family who owns property that abuts the rail trail project. And after several lengthy conversations with both the Massachusetts Ethics Commission and then also Brian Riley from Copeland and Page, I've been advised that participating in any kind of discussion or vote on any matter related to the rail trail would be a conflict of interest for me.
Right.
So I will not be participating in any votes relative to the rail trail.
Okay, so we're going to scratch the previous vote for nine. Now, you're welcome. And we're going to go back to that again. Again, communication twelve, the recommendation is regular course with referral to the mayor, Conservation Commission, the Environmental Agent, establish a hearing date on the 26th of August at 6:05 PM in the council chambers. All those in favor of that, please indicate in the usual manner. Let the record show eight to nothing on that. Thank you. We now move to communication thirteen.
C13, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, petition the Honorable City Council to adopt an order of taking, taking by eminent domain, permanent and temporary easements in, on and under the parcels of land shown on the plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land Twin Cities Rail Trail Leominster and Fitchburg, Mass., Prepared for City of Leominster," dated August 12th, 2019, prepared by SMC Surveying and Mapping Consultants, and award damages for said taking to the landowners affected thereby in the amount set forth in Schedule B enclosed herewith.
Schelfer, Council Schelfer Zephyr has recused himself on this as well. We'll yield the floor to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, similar to communication twelve, referrals to the mayor's office, excuse me, Conservation Commission and the environmental, directly Environmental Agent. We also need to vote on a public hearing for August 26, 2019, at 6:10 PM.
Thank you. Council, sir, the recommendation for regular course on communication thirteen with referral to the mayor's office, Conservation Commission, Environmental Agent, and to establish a public hearing at 6:10 PM in the council chambers on the 26th. All those in favor of establishing that hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, so move. Thank you. We now move on to communication fourteen.
C14, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $1,127,677 be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Highway State Aid Reserve for appropriation account.
Was that to be amended for Ward five or? I'm just checking on-
Three.
Okay, thank you.
And it's regarding Chapter 90 funds.
Communication fourteen is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication fourteen. Communication fifteen, Madam Clerk.
C15, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $570,000 in 900, $570,964,000 be made to the school department expense account, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue regarding fiscal year 2020 state budget adoption.
Thank you. Communication fifteen again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Same situation, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication sixteen, Madam Clerk.
C16, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $100,000 be made to the Gallagher Building expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund regarding operational expenses for fiscal year 2020.
Communication sixteen is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication sixteen. We now move on to petitions, first time on the calendar before the council, beginning with petition two dash twenty.
Two dash twenty, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., to install two jointly-owned poles on Willard Street at a point approximately 50 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street and New Lancaster Road and continuing approximately 150 feet in the southwest direction. National Grid to install two new poles for reliability and solar farm.
Petition two dash twenty is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course and we need to vote on a hearing for 8/26 at 6:01.
Thank you. Council, sir, the recommendation read on two dash twenty to establish a hearing on 8/26 at 6:01 PM in the council chambers. Regular course has been given. Are there any, excuse me, all those in favor-
Isn't it six o'clock on the first one?
You have, you have six o'clock or 6:01.
Six for that one.
Six on that one, counselor. Okay, six o'clock. Is that good? Counsel Frida?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, sir, their recommendation read for regular course on two dash twenty and to establish a hearing at six o'clock PM in the council chambers on August 26th. All those in favor of the recommendation for the hearing, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the hearing has been established. Thank you. We now move on to petition three dash twenty.
Three dash twenty, National Grid to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, under and across the public way or ways here and after named Portland Street, Leominster, Mass.
Thank you. Petition three dash twenty again is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Regular course, Mr. President. And let me, if I could just ask the clerk, the note that I got is 6:01 and 6:02 is, which one are we?
6:01.
6:01, all right. So we need to vote on a hearing of 6:01 on 8/26.
Thank you. Counsel, sir, their recommendation for regular course and to establish a public hearing on 8/26 at 6:01 PM in the council chambers. All those in favor of establishing that hearing time and date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the hearing date has been established. Thank you, Madam Chair. We now move on to matters before the council. I'll yield the floor to the Chairman of Finance for a financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We started the fiscal year fiscal '20 on July 1st with a balance in our stabilization account of $19,890,850. Through tonight's date, all outstanding and past appropriations total $1,521,100, leaving an ultimate balance, if everything is passed, at $18,369,750.
Thank you very much. We now move on to financial matters, beginning with communication three. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C3, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the attached loan order for $3 million be adopted for the police station planning and owner project manager. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. Later on in our calendar, we'll have our first reading. It will establish a date for our second reading later on this week. I don't think we have to vote on anything yet, right? Just the first reading later on, so.
First time on the calendar?
Oh, right, well-
I'm sorry, this is before the council right now.
It's before the council.
Okay.
But we're going to vote on the first reading at the end of the calendar.
Yeah, right, exactly. Further time until that point, right. So just recommendation is further time?
Recommendation would be further time to about 20 minutes from now, hopefully.
We'll deal with that. Okay, thank you. Counsel, sir, the recommendation for, on communication three, for further time. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, nine to nothing. Thank you. We now move on to communication four. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C4, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $83,100 to the Highway Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from a stabilization fund. This money, if passed, would be used to acquire all of the permanent and temporary easements that are outlined in the two communications read by the Legal Affairs Chairman, namely C12 and C13, for the rail trail project. While the easements themselves are not before us for action this evening, the money is, the reason for that is, is the money needs to be available in the event that the C12 and C13 are ultimately passed. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, it would be my recommendation to grant C-3, I'm sorry, C-4, so the money would be available in the event that C12 and C13 are favorably acted upon. In the event that, covering all contingencies, that if C12 and C13 failed, of course, this money would need to be either re-appropriated or would ultimately end up certified for free cash at the end of the fiscal year. So putting ourselves in a position to essentially avail ourselves of every possible option, it would be my position to go ahead and grant C-4 this evening. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Council David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C4.
Thank you. Council, sir, the recommendation read to grant communication four. Are there any further questions or comments on the floor? Council Bonanza, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should also mention that the total cost, according to Mass DOT, for the payment of all of the damages with respect to these takings is $155,085.49. They have certified that there is $68,000 available from prior DOT projects to fund this and thus why we have $83,100 as opposed to $155,085.49. So if C4 does get passed this evening, there would be a total amount available from our action as a council of $151,100, which would be used to satisfy the damages for these takings.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? Council Frida.
I appreciate through the Chair, I appreciate the Finance Chair. I just wish some of these things we get in a timely manner. Whenever you got them, we should have gotten them so we can look at them and know what we're talking about tonight when people stand at the podium. We know what's right and what's wrong. But, you know, I would appreciate in the future that we get them at the same time you get them.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Council Feckley.
Okay, so I don't know if this is putting the, the cart before the horse, but, you know, there were, was a lot of concern this evening regarding safety of the rail trail and also all of the crossings, you know, with the main streets that are going to be, you know, intersecting with the rail trail. So I'm wondering if we can go back to C12 and ask the Chairperson if he would also add a reference to the, a referral to the police chief in the traffic division? This is going to be something that's going, we're going to be addressing, safety of the rail trail, especially in the evening and, you know, crossing the main streets. I mean, if we're going to be going one step further on this project, the next meeting, I would like to have those referrals.
Okay, Mr. Chairman of Finance, you have any objection to that on C12?
It's, that's Legal Affairs petition.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Legal Affairs.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll add it. Police Chief will get involved with one of his staff members.
Yeah, maybe even come down and speak with us about it.
We'll, we'll see, we'll see. No, we're in session, ma'am. Okay, any other, Council Feckley, you still have the floor.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? Council Frida, you have the floor.
I just wanted to add that Mr. DeChico got up tonight to speak to the issue that he had. And I was involved with him years ago when this first started and knew what he had been told then and how that changed. And I was there when the state came and we walked the land and had discussion about his unique situation. So there was a good rapport and there was good action taken and everybody was pretty cooperative, so I just wanted to point that out, that they did do what they said they were going to do as far as Mr. DeChico.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will require a two-thirds vote. We're going to begin with Council Frida.
Yay.
Roll call, thank you. Yay? Council Dobrowski?
Yay.
Yay. Council Feckley?
Yay.
Yay. Council Bonanza?
Yay.
Yay. Council Ottinger?
Yay.
Yay. Council David Cormier?
Yay.
Yay, thank you. And I'll be recorded as yay by unanimous vote. We have, actually, by eight to nothing. Yeah, thank you. That has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $83,100 be appropriated to the Highway Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read for moving for the adoption of the order on communication four. Again, I'll yield the floor if there are any questions or comments. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Finance Committee. We now move on to communication eight.
C8, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $75,000 to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is relative to the purchase of new utility truck for the fire department as well as some Scott air packs attached to the communication where quotes relative to both the truck and the equipment. The pickup truck that's being replaced is, is taking out of service a 2003 utility vehicle and the air packs that are being purchased, number 25, in units and are valued at $23,125. Would be my position to grant C-8, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Thank you. Council David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-8.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to grant communication eight. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of $75,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, their recommendation read. Again, I'll yield the floor for any questions or comments. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Mr. Chairman, thank you and the Finance Committee as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. We now move on to new business. We have a first reading of the ordinance. I'll yield the floor to Legal Affairs Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance. This is petition 6119. Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the City Council amend the city ordinances to reclassify the position of water specialist into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from an S5 to an S7. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to Council Frida.
I agree.
Thank you. Council Bonanza?
I agree as well.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, Petition 61-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
By a vote of nine to nothing, 61-19's order has been adopted. Thank you. We're all set with him. Okay. We now move on to 64-19. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is the first reading of an ordinance, Petition 6419, Mark C. Bonanza Esquire, relative to amend Section 13-34 of the revised ordinance for the City of Leominster to eliminate one of two existing no parking zones that run southerly on Union Street from intersection of Central and Union Street. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and I'd ask you to poll my committee again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the Clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I agree as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Counsel, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Bonanza.
I just want to note that in the interim from when we passed the original petition, the traffic department has weighed in and does support this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this again will be a roll call vote for the first reading of the ordinance, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfer Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
By a vote of nine to nothing, the first reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to the last page on the agenda. Under new business, we have the first reading of the ordinance. Again, Communication 3. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-3. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the attached loan order for $3 million be adopted for the police station planning and owner project manager. I'll read the ordinance again. I'll read the order again, I'm sorry. City of Leominster and City Council ordered that $3 million is appropriated for the purpose of financing, planning, and owner project manager costs relating to the construction of a new police station, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Law Chapter 44 or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor and treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation to grant the first reading. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant the first reading of C-3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read to grant the first reading of Communication 3. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, again, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfer Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
And I am very honored to say yay. Nine to nothing vote on that. Let's go police station, baby. We are done with that. Any other items under new business, Counsel? Go ahead.
I'd like to take a vote to bring the Police Chief down.
Okay.
And perhaps maybe his, one of his patrolmen who have the most knowledge specifically on the issue of Monument Park, Carter Park, a lot of the public places around the Menousknock Brook where they've done a lot of improvements. There's just a lot of issues with, with people loitering there. And I understand it's a public place and that's-
Right.
And that's cool. But it's not good if they're affecting other people who are trying to enjoy the-
Okay.
Enjoy the park. So I'd just like to bring him down and discuss that particular issue.
Okay. The chief and/or an administrative staff member?
I think the chief and, no, the chief and maybe a guy who's actually doing the patrolling in that area that can probably give us the best scenario of what's going on.
Okay. So the mo, the recommend, do I have a second on that?
I have a second to that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to request the chief to come down here with staff members to discuss the topic as Counsel Dobrowski has commented on. All those in favor of the recommendation to do that, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, we'll invite the chief to come down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items? Counsel Bonanza?
Mr. President, I just think it would be nice for us to point out that although it's a publicly posted meeting, we do have a special meeting scheduled for August 15 at six o'clock. And in that meeting, we are scheduled to take up the loan order that I, we just approved the first reading of for the police station or for the project manager and, and planning costs associated with the police station as well as C-14, which is $1,127,677 for the street resurfacing expense account.
Thank you. So there is a special meeting here Thursday night on those topics at 6:00 p.m. Thank you. Any other items? Counsel Feckley?
Yes. I just want to circle back to Counsel Dobrowski's request for the Police Chief to come back. Could we add to the, that agenda, Police Chief or his, his concerns about the rail trail, if they're going to be coming down anyway?
Sure. You know, if he wants to weigh in at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to try to have him down for the next meeting if he's available. I'm not sure what his vacation schedule is or other commitments that he has. All right? Okay, good. Anything else under new business? Okay, old business. Anything under old business? Counsel Dobrowski?
Yeah, I'd just like to circle back to Communication 12 and Communication 13. I think I, we ought to add the Economic Development Coordinator on that referral list as well.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to community calendar. Anything happening that you might be aware of? Counsel Frida?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell everyone that gentleman Paul Henry Prevell, we all signed a certificate for him. He turn, he will turn 90 years old on September 23. They had a surprise birthday party for him on Saturday. He was in the U.S. Navy air deals during the Korean War. His son-in-law got back to me and said that he was touched by getting a certificate from the council. So I just wanted to relay that message.
Well, thank you for initiating that. Happy birthday, Paul. Thank you for your service. Any other items under community calendar? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.